Welcome to the LAITHA Public Schools Board of Education Meeting for July 16, 2015. Thanks for being here. Joy, will you call the role?
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mr. McCune?
Here.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Here.
Mr. Poland?
Here.
Mr. Shear?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
We have some new voices. Welcome, guys. We're glad you're here. Would you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We get to take a moment here and take the oath of office for Rick, and Joe, and Shannon, and myself. So, guys, let's come on down here.
Kansas Statuets 25/20/23, 25/20/24, and 54-106 require a newly elected or appointed board member to take and subscribe to an oath of office. In accordance, therefore, with said Kansas Statuets, please raise your right hand, and after hearing the oath of office, respond collectively by saying, "I do." Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties of members of the Board of Education Unified School District 233? So help you God.
Thank you. Well, it's an honor to be reelected for four more years, and it's a humbling experience to get to serve in this capacity. And I know that the three gentlemen beside me feel the same. Do you guys have family members here that you want to point out? Joe, I know you do.
Do we have time?
Yes. Will you have them stand?
Yeah, I guess all-
Guys, will you stand?
Family stand, so-
Joe's posse. Glad to have you. Shannon, is anybody here?
No.
They're here in spirit, huh? And how about you, Rick?
No, they're not here.
I have my hubby here. Jeb, will you stand and wave? Yeah, there he is. Thank you. Thank you, guys, and welcome. So now we come to the exciting annual elections for president and vice president and some other positions. Let's start with the election of the 2015-2016 Board President. And, guys, this is a little different. There's two motions required. The first one will be to throw names in the hat. So I'll open the floor for that right now.
Ms. Felter, I would nominate Rick Shear for president.
Okay. We don't need a second at this time? Any other nominations? Okay, let's-
Cease nominations?
Second. Okay. So I have a motion to cease nominations by Mike Poland, thank you, second, by Amy Martin. Okay, and the name that we will be voting on will be Mr. Shear. Okay. And do you just go through?
We need a roll call for cease nominations.
Okay. Let's do a roll call for cease nominations. Thank you.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. And then our motion, too, would be to elect Rick Shear to serve as the 2015-2016 Board of Education President. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. McCune.
Roll call vote, please. Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Congratulations. That's all we do.
Well, thank you all. Thank you all for this opportunity, and I think it's going to be a very fun and exciting and challenging year going forward, but I think we're ready for it.
Second.
(laughing).
I do want to thank you, Leeta, for all your guidance and your leadership over the past year. So thank you for taking us through the past school year, and again, thank you for being elected and excited about moving forward.
Thanks. It's been an honor. Thank you.
All right. So the next order of business, then, would be the election of the 2014-2015 Board Vice President. Again, the same process where we'll need two motions. One, we'll make the nominations, then we'll cease nominations, and then we'll vote on the individuals. So do we have nominations for the Vice President?
I'll nominate Brent McCune. I'd move to cease nominations.
Second.
Good job.
Okay. So we have a nomination of Brent McCune, and we have a motion by Leeta Felter, and a second-
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry. A motion by Mrs. Martin, and a second by Mr. Beveridge. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Very good.
Congratulations.
Oh, we haven't elected him yet.
Okay, sorry.
Now, we do need a motion to elect Brent McCune to serve as the 2015-2016 Board of Education Vice President. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Wickliffe, and a second by Mrs. Felter. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Congratulations.
All right. So we have a few more appointments that we need to go through. 1.06, appoint 2015-2016 Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and Treasurer.
I would move to appoint Ms. Noe Bondurant as Clerk, Ms. Gail McKay as Deputy Clerk, and Mr. Merrell Hester as Treasurer of the Board of Education for 2015 and 2016. Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Poland, and a second by Mr. McCune. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
All right. 1.07, appoint 2015-2016 School Attorney.
I would move to appoint Mr. Michael G. Norris of Norris &amp; Kepplinger LLC for the 2015 and '16 School Attorney.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McCune, and a second by Mr. Wickliffe. Roll call, please.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes. So far, so good.
You're doing great. (laughing).
All right. So coming up next, 2.01, this information presentations, and we have a budget development update for 2016, and Mr. Hutchison is going to make the presentation.
Good evening. This evening, we're going to begin discussions on 2015-16 budget. I say begin because, as of just yesterday, I received the software from the Department of Education that we prepare our budgets on. As you know, it's an unusual year, and there are a lot of adjustments had to be made due to the block grants. I was just in the wonderful city of El Dorado, Kansas, today at the Budget Workshop, learning exactly how to do that. So we'll have the final budget developed in about a week with our mill levies, recommendations as well, but I have several things to discuss with you this evening. As the veteran board members understand, we usually begin with a discussion about what kind of budget assumptions are we building this year's budget around. This year's budget assumptions begin with a growth in our district of 417 students or 375 full-time equivalent students. Next, we're assuming that the block grant is replacing our funding formula, and that's what we'll design the budget around. That funding formula was in place since 1992, but it no longer exists, and we are preparing the budget under a block grant. We also have added zero in the way of a growth contingency. Also, as veteran board members understand, in normal years, we would add about 450 students to our projection, and that was done in order to preserve any state aid in the event our enrollment projection was off and we had a large influx of students. I won't get into all the details for the new board members because it'd be an exercise in futility because base state aid per pupil really doesn't drive anything anymore. Block grant is a block grant. We're frozen in funding, and those variables are no longer in play. We experienced a 7% assessed valuation increase in- Mr. Poland, I apologize, I meant to look this up because I know you normally ask how much of that is commercial versus residential. I do know it's predominantly commercial this year, which is an unusual change. Usually, it has to do with more reassessment at the residential level, but I'd be happy to get that information for the August Board meeting. Also making the assumption that we'll maximize our LOB levy to recover lost state aid use in FY '15. What I mean by that statement, it's very confusing, but essentially, we had a reduction last year in our LOB state aid, but in that reduction will stay in place for the next two years. We'll be $2.7 million less in LOB state aid, but the block grant allows us to turn around and increase our LOB levy locally in order to recoup that $2.7 million. And I'll talk about that in just a little bit. Also, we assume that, for the sake of modeling, that we were frozen at $38.52 base state aid per pupil, but as I mentioned earlier, it really doesn't drive anything, so that assumption really doesn't have to exist. We also assume that we'll maximize capital outlay as long as it doesn't adversely affect our overall levy. We always want to try and pull in capital outlay funds as much as we can, but maintain a flat overall levy. To really understand how budgeting under the block grant will work is, we have to talk about what is the block grant. The block grant really involves a reduction in our LOB state aid of last year of $2.7 million that will repeat for the '15-'16 school year and again for the '16-'17 school year, hence the idea of a block. We are allowed to locally raise that money and maintain what our legal maximum budget had been. It's all about keeping us at that frozen legal maximum budget. We also have a reduction in capital outlay that we experienced this past year of about $2.1 million. There isn't a vehicle to recoup that. We just, it's half of what of our state aid was reduced, so we will have to live with that for two more years. We're at that reduced funding level and frozen. Doesn't allow for growth. As you saw, we're going to grow about 417 students. We expect in this two-year block, we'll grow a minimum of 700 students, which makes it challenging on our budget when our funding is not increasing. It does provide more funding flexibility. Capital outlay's been loosened up a little bit. I call it the slippery slope. We've had these discussions about how much can truly be utilized because capital outlay usually goes to maintain our buildings. And finally, there is the establishment of an extra need fund that I learned a little bit about this afternoon. The extra need fund, we do intend on applying for. We'd apply based on growth, meaning we'll have to wait till September 20th when we have our count numbers, we would make an application. There'll be two types really considered. Large decreases in assessed valuation. I'm a community in the oil area, they're experiencing 25% decreases in assessed valuation. They will be heard first, they can file right away, then the growth districts. I tried to ascertain exactly how much of the funding might be taken up, so to speak, by assessed valuation. The state doesn't have those numbers till we do this budget document, then they can project that a little closer.
John?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you give us an idea of how much we'll be asking for? Like, what would we expect under the old formula?
My intent was to ask for exactly the growth. It's, I recall, it's about $1.3 million.
Okay. And the fund amount, again-
I'm sorry.
Do you remember how much they put in the fund? Like, 16 million?
I have an awful lot of numbers running in my head. I've almost quoted 12, but Dr. Barry, do you recall?
I think it's in that 12 to 14 million range.
Thank you.
While the block grant legislation was signed into law, it's been kind of a volatile summer. That's why the delay in us receiving our software. As you know, June 26, three-judge panel gets injunctive relief and basically says, "No, the block grant can't go." Four days later, the State Supreme Court stays to their decision and says the block grant is back in. And until yesterday, KSDE was actually developing three models because it looked like they're potentially, because the Supreme Court had said they recognized the need for a swift solution, they thought it possibly could come down before we would receive our software package, but really, the timeline just does not work out. The critical part is, we have to file our levies with the county and the state by August 25th, and even the judicial system, even SWIFT, if you gave every step 10 days, you'll be past that mark before a decision could be made, so that we have now, we now know that we'll be operating under the block grant. Even though base state aid per pupil no longer exists and is a driver, I think it's important to understand kind of where we've gone with base state aid per pupil. We're not really talking that we reduced $2.7 million for a year and we're just going to have to live with it. We've really been in decline for about seven years. 2009, we saw our high of 4,400 students, so we've been trimming our budget along the way for seven years, and it's just become even more complicating that we're now at another reduced level and frozen. Really, historically, since this whole formula's been in place, we're only about $200 higher than in 1992, and that's not adjusted for inflation. If we adjust for inflation, we're really at kind of historic lows per pupil, and that's the part where we're frozen at, and that's why it's become so challenging in this year's budget. Normally, I would talk to you about what the effects on the mill levy. All I can really do is talk conceptually tonight. What we're going to really feel pressure on is the supplemental general LOB levy. As I mentioned, because the state aid is reduced, it's really the sharing of the pie. If they've reduced their piece, we have the ability to raise more locally, but that's going to drive up the mill levy for that particular fund. It will be offset partially by a 7% increase in assessed valuation. I just don't know how far and how much until, there's a lot of variables that go into determining these. Each one of the remaining levies will be subject to that 7% assessed valuation also. There could be minor relief of each of those. If the funding needs of each of those funds were exactly the same, in theory, you could lower the remaining levy slightly, but if the needs are a little higher as we calculate everything, it may stay exactly stable. So the one that we expect some movement in is that supplemental general, and we'll just have to see how far that goes and present that to you in August. I will tell you, though, just as in the past few years, really, the idea is that you really have no other additional authority to turn to. You're at your maximums. LOB is the only one that you might be, right now, be slightly below, and you'll have to determine if you want to raise that, but otherwise, the board has utilized every avenue they have to raise revenue for classrooms. The real difficult thing about the block grant is that this whole frozen concept does not address growth in both costs and growth in students. We have exactly the same legal maximum budget, and for those that don't understand that term, it's an interesting concept in Kansas. That's all we can spend. That's our ceiling. You're not allowed to go higher. I can't go out and ask the public for a tax increase and try and bump that up. That's the limit. It hasn't changed at all, but we have 417 more students coming, and we have a few other factors at work in this coming year's budget. So as we do that, we realize we have about a $2 million deficit that we've been working on the last several weeks. What's driving that is increasing costs. As you know, we went out for bid on our bus contract, we've signed a contract, that's a large piece of this upward movement of expenditures. We also have increases in bandwidth charges and licensing fees around our technology programs, rates are just up. It's something we can't control every rate, where we tried to do inroads with energy costs and have been pretty successful the last two years, there isn't a vehicle to do that with the technology costs. And then just the other thousands of line items that, there might be one you can't control, and the cost of living went up on that line, and it's something we couldn't eliminate. All those combined to create about a $2 million deficit in the budget that we had to look at. So how do we solve that? Well, I'll start with saying how we can't solve it, and I know many people are sick and tired of seeing this particular image and me giving this same speech about not being able to use bond funds, but it's illegal to use bond funds, and I keep giving the message because it's a difficult one for both the public and staff to understand. How can you be doing all this construction and say that you have a $2 million deficit? Your priorities are off. It's not about priorities, it's about legally what we can utilize those funds for. So how do we balance this budget? Staff's developed and begun implementing the following plan. The first thing we've done is eliminate vacant positions. These are positions such as our Assistant Director of Custodial Services, our Wellness Manager, and the Principal of PLC. Coverage of PLC has been assigned to another existing staff member, but as these positions were vacated, we have eliminated those. We've also reduced some support positions, such as our Media Relations Specialist, an Accounting Specialist, Wellness Specialist, several assistants. We're also looking at custodial staffing reductions. We are, we're going to achieve this through a revised cleaning plan that reduces the number of custodians and addresses the needs of the buildings. We'll be working with our principals in the coming weeks to finalize that plan, and then those reductions will occur. We're looking to reallocate some of our costs to food service. We traditionally, lunchroom supervision is sort of an, is it an instructional administrative thing? Is it a food service thing? We're going to try, we're going to have to lean on our food service balances for the next two years. Expectation is not that Mr. Kingery can somehow absorb these costs and break even. I know he'll try, I know that's the kind of administrator he is, but we may have to be decreasing his balances over the two years to help us out in our general fund. We're going to have to reduce our school budgets, unfortunately. We have several PARAs that currently help out elsewhere in the building when their duties are done. PARAs are reimbursed at seven hours. We have many at eight. We're reducing them down to that seven mark so we get full reimbursement on them, so that extra hour of work has to be absorbed by other staff. We've eliminated our teacher mentoring program, eliminating the elementary Spanish program, and finally, eliminated middle school library aides. Implementation of this plan eliminates our $2 million deficit. None of these decisions are easy to make, that's why I showed that chart about this seven years of decline. We have been trying to stay away from the classroom or support a classroom for seven years. The year finally came where we could not completely avoid that, and we've tried to minimize it, but we couldn't avoid it this year. Because we have not been able to have access to our budgeting software from the state, we're going to be talking to the board about a revised timeline. We still have to meet our August 25 deadline, but this evening, I've given you some of the assumptions and how we plan to achieve a balanced budget, but at our August 8 meeting is when I will actually ask you to approve publication of our Notice of Budget Hearing. That's later in our agenda, but we don't need to act on it tonight because I have not provided you what that notice is. We'll move our Community Budget Workshop to further explain these issues to August 13 in this room at 6:00 PM, and then we'll have our public hearing at a special board meeting if the board approves on August 20th and adopt the budget that evening. That will allow time for me to have them on file by August 25. These dates could be a little fluid, but the, one of the issues is, you have to have that Notice of Hearing published for 10 days. Therefore, I had to create a gap between when you could meet after acting on that on the 6th. With that, I'd stand for any questions.
No discussion of the increase in health insurance? Has that been already figured into the $2 million deficit, or we're, I know we're still facing some large increases there?
We're still working on that with our consultants and the Health and Dental Subcommittee team. That is not contemplated in all of, in that $2 million. We're not exactly sure where we're landing on that yet as far as sharing of costs, so that's something we still have to address in the coming weeks.
But we know it's, there's going to be something additional there.
Correct.
So we anticipate we'll absorb those increases in costs by sharing those costs with staff?
It's unknown right now. That's an item for negotiations, and again, as John mentioned, we have a subcommittee that meets from that team, and so we just recently got some of those options from CBiz, and we're still working through that. We don't meet again until July 30.
Correct.
But it's possible we could come back and be making further cuts once we realize what those costs will be?
It's a possibility.
Okay.
Going back to the reallocation of lunchroom supervision to food services? Sure, with the public, we're not reducing costs there, we're reallocating it. How does that help us?
Basically, it frees up our general fund that currently holds those costs and allows us to accommodate the costs that are occurring in the general fund because the food service fund has a fund balance that's been increasing. It's had to increase because mandated increases in lunch prices, even though we did not want to do that, that's grown up, so we believe we can absorb some of the cost for one or two years out of that fund balance. It's not a long-term solution. Right. It's really to get through the block grant and see what the new formula looks like.
Our food production area does such a good job in terms of running that operation, but this is truly, we think, a cost for serving lunch to our students, so it's a legitimate food production cost. It's at, it's my understanding, it'd be personnel at the point of sale. Once we're supervising the kids, that's a general fund cost because they're teachers and other aides and so forth, but we can't have a food lunch program unless we have someone selling it to them and that works in the line, so this is, I think, a cost that John's figured that we can pass on.
Do we need approval to pass that cost on, or can we just make that decision ourselves?
Just an internal transfer. It's-
I know my entire term on the board, we've been feeling the cuts and the shrinking of the base state aid per pupil, which is a great, even though it's no longer included in the block grant, it's a great measurement tool for us to be able to tell the dollars that are truly going to the classroom. And so I know that we kind of rushed past the fact that we are having to cut the elementary Spanish program. That's not done without blood, sweat, and tears, and there's a lot of heartache behind that decision, isn't there?
There is.
And the surgical, other eliminations of positions or contracting of the roles to, like, the cleaning, it sounds brilliant. Those faces and teammates that are going away with the eliminations will be greatly missed, so although this is very analytical as we're reviewing it, please know it's not done, you know, at arm's length by any means. They're our family, and it hurts. It hurts not to be able to offer, you know, services on the elementary, the Spanish. I've heard from a lot of families that are very upset that it's going away. We're with you. We're upset, too. So thank you for your work. I see the list, and I mean, you have done a great example of surgical cutting. You haven't just lopped off programs, and we've worked very diligently as a team to keep it from the classroom, and so it's with a heavy heart that we do now feel it in the classroom, more than just expanding class sizes, right? It's actual cutting of programs, so thank you. But I also think it's important to realize that when we look at eliminating vacant positions and reducing support positions, the work hasn't gone away, the responsibilities have not gone away, and so we are, we're actually asking everybody else just to take on more, and we might also be asking them to take on more of their health insurance costs and everything. I mean, there are no winners in this situation.
John, with these different reductions that we're looking at, as Leeta was talking about, I mean, these are people that live and work or have lived and worked right here in the Olahtha School District. So these are people that have been with us for some time. So we don't do this lightly. And as you're looking at this, one of the things that I know that we've worked diligently at is to try to continue to focus on the classroom itself and, and trying to do what we possibly can. But Amy mentioned that very, very much is that there's still a lot of things that we have to do and none of that goes away at this point. Probably my little bit of big concern right now is that this is what we're doing for this school year, okay? And we have, you've already illustrated the increases that we had this year that we're not even going to be reimbursed or helped with. My bigger concern is next year. Again, so we're going to have another year of flat that we won't have any additional monies. And I can guarantee you that the rest of the world isn't being held flat. And so there's going to be more expenses next year even so. And so we're looking at this and we're trying to make a determination now of what does it look like this year? And it's hard this year. My concern is what is it going to be even next year? And what else are we going to have to take a look at? And that's going to be something I know that Dr. Barry and yourselves will look at. And again, not take it lightly, but that's even a bigger concern. And we want the public to think about that today because these hurt already. It's going to hurt even more next year. And we need to get ourselves prepared for that and, and try to come up with the best solutions that we can.
I think, I think it's even important to look beyond next year because we saw how difficult it was for the legislature to, to land where they did now. And after the block grant funding expires in two years, we're going to be opening a new high school. And, and I think it's impossible to have any idea what the formula will look like or what the funding levels will be two years out, but we'll still have that building ready to go and, and have to find a way to staff it.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Holfus?
Thanks for your hard work, John.
Okay, we're at 6:30. So we've got about 15 minutes so we move on to consent at this point. All right, so we have some action consent items, 4.01 to 4.20. Do any of the board members or Dr. Barry, is there anything in here particular that we want to talk about?
In addition to the standard trips and HR report and accounts payable, you have some of those standard items that are required by state statute that we adopted the organization meeting for the school board to start the year, which is tonight. And so all of those are just, you know, things that we have to do each and every year and report to the state that we have done those, like reporting 1,116 hours as our school year and use the flexibility of hours. Again, other designations about how we destroy documents and surplus property and advanced payments and all those things that, very routine that we do each and every year.
Do board members have any questions about any of the consent items? If not, do I have a motion?
I have none.
I move to approve consent agenda items numbered 4.01 to 4.20 as presented.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Martin and a second by Mrs. Felter. Joy?
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Very good. Well, we can continue to move on with the action bids and contract agreements. We do have the 5.01, the 2015-2016 School Resource Officers Agreement. Dr. Barry, if you want to talk about this just a little bit, and again, this is another one of those additional expenses. So important program for our schools. And again, this is something that is vital to us. It works very, very well with, with the local law enforcements. But again, this is another one that is not on the same track of not being able to do an increase and one more expense that we have that we've not been given any reimbursements or any help with yet.
It's a great summary.
Okay.
I will say the city's a great partner with us on this.
Absolutely.
Shouldn't be taken granted for that, so, and they do a great job. With that, I will move to approve the 2015-2016 School Resource Officers Agreement as presented. Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Felter and a second by Mrs. Martin. Roll call please.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Did you guys see the school resource officer that during the summer, they aren't necessarily doing their school jobs and found a 60-pound carp in a drainage ditch in Olahtha? Thought I'd lighten up the mood here a little bit. They multitask well, so.
All right, 5.02, trade bids for Olahtha West High School. You want to give some background in that?
We'd ask Greg if you want to just touch on, on what we have tonight.
Both of, both of the items we have on the agenda tonight are items that had previously been bid and rejected and that we rebid. One of them is ceramic tile. The other was acoustic panels. If you remember, we only had one bid. It seemed out of line and we had a fax bid. What we found in research is that that really needed to be split into two separate work packages. We had combined some work that isn't typically done by one contractor. It's normally done by two different trades. So we divided that into work package 40 acoustic panels and work package 54 cementous panels. And we received an adequate number of bids and they were within, within reason, within our budget. And that's all we have for tonight. We have received other bids, miscellaneous metals, athletic flooring, resilient flooring, and carpet. Those are still being reviewed and we'll have recommendations at the August board meeting.
Do I have a motion for 5.02?
I would make a motion to accept 5.02, to accept the bids listed in the bid summary as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McCune and a second by Mr. Wickliffe.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
5.03, Mill Creek Architectural Engineering Proposal. Who wants to speak to that, please?
Now, this is a proposal to continue work at Mill Creek. Again, this comes out of that pocket of money that John talks about. That's for aging facilities coming from the bond and, and other places. This is a proposal that breaks it into segments of work with an estimate of hours. So we don't truly know the cost, but it would never exceed what was presented to you tonight. It just depends, once they get into those things, how many hours it might take for each portion of that work. And also that will always be brought back to you then as we go through each segment. And at the same time, we have the chance to pass on a, a piece of that if, if the funding's not there and so forth. So it's really just an overall proposal for Hollis and Miller to get started based on an hourly fee schedule.
And how, how long does that extend out? 30 days, 60 days, 90 days or?
The work or?
Yeah, the work.
You know, I didn't total up the total number of days and hours, but it's a significant amount of work.
But do those days run concurrent?
Excuse me?
Or do those days run concurrent?
Yes, some of them would.
Yeah.
They're consecutive.
Oh, they're consecutive? Okay.
Okay. They're consecutive six months, seven months.
Okay.
That's good, thanks.
I move to accept the fee proposal from Hollis and Miller Architects as presented.
Second. So I have a motion by Mrs. Felter and a second by Mr. Beveridge. Joy?
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Okay, 5.04, Olahtha West High School change orders in excess of $20,000. You want to walk and talk through this a little bit also?
We'll give you the short version first and if that's not enough depth, we can back up and go through the long version because this is obviously more about construction than any of you have ever wanted to know in your life. Let's just start with the big picture of it all. The school board has authorized the superintendent or their representative to sign change orders less than $20,000. And then we regularly report those back to the school board when we do it. Change orders in excess of $20,000, the board has indicated they want to approve those prior to them being signed. On a project the size of the high school, 80-some-million-dollar construction budget, 100-million-dollar overall budget, the number of $20,000 change orders is going to be higher than you see on any other project. In fact, we seldom see a $20,000 change order on an elementary school or a middle school. We're going to see a lot of them. That doesn't mean that there's anything wrong. That just means that the numbers get large because the building's large and the budget is large and, and the limit is still the same limit. Tonight, we have several of those. They all have to do with structural work. They all have to do with foundations and structural steel and cast-on-site tilt-up. Many of them are unknowns that we put an allowance in the contract to help us cover those. And in some cases, the allowance was large enough or not large enough. We do have an overall contingency for the project and these fit well within the contingency. And in fact, these aren't unexpected. The sizes, we didn't, the actual size of the change order, we didn't know until the work was done. That's the, that's the short answer.
The most important piece of that is you read on the bottom of that item that says they're all being covered by allowances within that budget, so.
Either by allowances or the change order contingency that we carry in the project.
So what you're saying by that is this does not endanger breaking our budget? Yeah.
We have an allowance, a budget that we carry separate from the construction budget to cover change orders and unforeseen conditions and we're within that still.
Greg, and I think you explained it nicely. They are just bigger numbers because again, we're talking about an $80 million versus a $1 million change someplace.
A middle, an elementary school is an example. $12.5 million for Mill Brook, our latest elementary school. About 11.2 million of that was the construction budget. Difficult to get a change order over $20,000 with that size project. $86,000 of that is our latest construction budget, $100 million overall project budget, 375,000 square foot building. $20,000 change orders are going to happen a lot. We're going to see many of them over the project. It doesn't mean there's anything wrong.
And that's something to keep in mind if and when we ever do another high school, do we change that for something like this? Whether, you know, you need to come back that often when you've got such a, a large budget that you have to deal with in the first place.
Does it, does it slow down the process to wait for us to approve the change orders?
Here's the stance we've taken in the past. No, it really doesn't. If a project, if a change order is that large, then the construction manager and I normally see it coming far enough in advance that we can accommodate bringing it to the school board. That's especially on a middle school or an elementary school. If you're going to have a $20,000 change order in elementary school, we're normally going to see that far enough in advance that we can fit within your structure to get it to you. We could have on this high school some emergency change orders that reach $20,000 or more that doesn't fit in that schedule. I can't, obviously it's an emergency. I can't anticipate what that may, may be. I'm sure Dr. Barry can get with you then and we can work out some sort of emergency solution that we can deal with it. But, but the reality is $20,000, it just means we've got to see further in advance. And if it's going to be that big, to be blunt, the construction manager and I ought to be able to see that far in advance to.
I think it's still a good practice to have in place for the board.
I agree.
But I'm sure the board will be more than happy to accommodate if it does get to an emergency, that we can get together in an emergency meeting or whatever the case may be to cover it if we need to. Very good. Okay, do I have a motion for 5.04?
I move to approve the Olahtha West High School change orders in excess of $20,000 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Felter and a second by Mr. McCune. Roll call please.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
All right, 5.05, bids for music instruments for growth in band and orchestra. Dr. Barry, you want to talk a little bit about this because this, again, I know we're talking about a lot, we're talking on both sides. So we're, so we're still building buildings and we're still growing students. This is another opportunity though that we want to make sure that we're providing back to the classroom, but if you want to talk to a little bit of that?
That's a great example of with increased growth comes extra costs. And while that's not accounted for in the block grant, we do have the ability through our capital outlay to, to buy some additional instruments so that kids in the classroom at this point are not impacted. And so that's what this is. Again, a different pocket of money.
Do I have a motion?
Move to award the low bid to vendors providing pricing on instruments as specified.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Beveridge, a second by Mr. Wickliffe. Roll call please.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
All right, 6.02, finish this up.
2015-2016 regular meeting dates, times, and locations.
I move to adopt a resolution to establish 2015-2016 regular meeting dates, times, and locations per Kansas statute.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mrs. Martin, a second by Mr. Wickliffe. Joy?
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Sheer?
Yes.
All right, 6.02, finish this up.
2015-2016 regular meeting dates, times, and locations.
I move to adopt a resolution to establish 2015-2016 regular meeting dates, times, and locations per Kansas statute.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mrs. Martin, a second by Mr. Wickliffe. Joy?
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
I would like that if nobody else does.
Mrs. Felter?
Once I heard that the wonderful Nancy Ingram is the president of the foundation board this next year, I'm like, oh, sign me up. It'll be fun. And Mr. Wickliff, are you a representative because of your employment? Are you a community representative already?
Yes, I'm a community representative.
On the Olathe Public Schools Foundation Board?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, you're a board member already. Okay. And any volunteers to serve as the 2015-2016 Kansas Association of School Boards Governmental Relations Network?
I'm happy to do that. I think it's, there's not any work involved, and if anyone else wants it, they can have it, but I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, so we have Mr. Wickliff looking for a motion for Mr. Wickliff to serve as the 2015-2016 Head Start Policy Council Board Representative, Mrs. Felter to serve as the 2015-2016 Olathe Public Schools Foundation Board Representative, and Mrs. Martin to serve as the 2015-2016 Kansas Association of School Boards Governmental Relations Network Representative.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Mrs. Felter and a second by Mr. Poland.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
All right, 6.02, finish this up. 2015-2016 regular meeting dates, times, and locations.
I move to adopt a resolution to establish 2015-2016 regular meeting dates, times, and locations per Kansas statute.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mrs. Martin, a second by Mr. Wickliff.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Very good. All right, we got through the items. So at this time, I think we'll take a, like a seven-minute break, or 12-minute break, excuse me, 12-minute break, and we'll come back at 7 o'clock. Well, welcome back. At this time, we will look for public comments.
Each regular meeting of the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal comments involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded, or broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and your address.
Do we have anybody in the audience? We didn't have anybody preregistered. Mr. Poland, I understand you have some comments?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Poland. Live at 301 South Stevenson, and just since it's on television, I am a member of the Board of Education. Well, I've approached this bench before to discuss topics of interest and of concern to me, but this time, please picture a dog with his tail between his legs and eggies on his face. That's how I approach it tonight. I was raised in a time and a town when your handshake was a contract. I'm here tonight to confess I have violated a handshake. For lack of a better exclamation, explanation, I have committed a terrible boo-boo. I have violated an oath of confidentiality, so I cannot be real specific as far as the details. But in our household, as our four boys are growing up, a much repeated phrase was "the big R, accept responsibility for your actions." Unfortunately, it's a mandate for me to live by also. You screw up, you face the consequences. I must live by the standards I have preached, and this is the form that I must use to face those who have been offended. I've wrestled with and prayed about why this is such a annoying issue to me. I have been convicted by my transgressions, and my conscience has kept it alive in my thoughts. My conscience finally won the wrestling match. I've been told it is not an issue, but my conscience kept telling me otherwise. Our Declaration of Independence refers us to the laws of nature and of nature's God. One of those laws is the conscience God put in place to keep us warned when we stray off the path. When it has been on my mind 24/7, I knew I had to face it head-on. This nature's God and the God that I worship has also provided us a handbook on living, the Bible. In it, we are taught that no matter how innocently or nonchalantly we speak, our words have an effect. In James we read, "But the tongue can no man tame; it is a restless evil." But this book also gives us a course to seek restitution, and we also read there that if you remember that your brother has something against you, first be reconciled to your brother, and that's why I'm here tonight, to seek reconciliation. I haven't given you the preface, let me now give you the sin. I have openly discussed in public information that was shared during an executive session of the Board of Education. I have breached a confidentiality that is inherent in my role as a member of the Board of Education. Because of the confidential nature of the issues or the information, I really cannot share more details about it, but that's really not the important issue. My seemingly innocuous conversations have or have potentially affected many people, for example, including those employees whose careers might have been affected, our superintendent who has to mend some fences now, professional counsel which relies on the confidentiality during negotiations, and constituents whose trust I have violated, and real importantly, fellow Board of Education members, our relationship has been compromised, and I will share more about it in the executive session. So what's the big deal? Why am I using your valuable time for a confession? Just to ease my mind? Well, I hope in my heart that's not my motive. I have violated the trust of the public, therefore I feel a public apology is necessary. I cannot possibly reach out to everybody who individually, to each person whose life I may or have affected, but hopefully, I can reach out to many tonight. In closing, regretfully, I cannot rescind what I've done, but I can bow to not let it happen again. Hopefully, in some small way, my transgression can serve as a reminder to all public servants to not let your guard down and to train your tongue wisely. I do sincerely apologize, seek your forgiveness, and will work to regain your confidence that once again, my handshake is an oath on which I will stand. Thank you.
All right, seeing that there's no other comments, public comments, we'll move forward. Future action items. 7.01 to 7.02.
Mr. Shear? I think we didn't hit 6.03.
That one's deferred until next month. That's about the budget hearing.
Yeah, I apologize. We, yeah, we are going to defer that, because that's not a motion or it's not an action item for tonight.
So that would be a motion for the actual hearing certificate of a maximum mill levy not to exceed, and then the board will have a hearing and could lower it, but not go over that, and so you weren't presented that tonight because of the software.
But thank you for catching that. All right, future action items. Does anybody have any questions about the future action items, 7.01 to 7.03? Information written, 8.01 to 8.03. Anybody have any questions about the information? Yep. Seeing none, topics for discussion. Anything anybody wants to bring up tonight? Shannon, Joe? Next time.
I have one thing, actually. Kansas Association of School Boards is having a school finance summit on August 28th in Topeka. It will be a great group of education officials from around the state, and I highly encourage my fellow board members to join me that day from, I think it's 9:00 to 3:00. It's a Friday, and it would be a very good use of your time if you have that day free.
Can you have that scanned and maybe sent out to all of us?
Absolutely.
Certain information. All right, superintendent's comments. Berry?
Well, the buzz, obviously, is about the budget. It didn't take long for a radio representative to run up at the break and want to talk about it. One of the questions he asked was, is it emotional? Well, it is very emotional. It is a task we take very seriously in our district, because we have had to meet with a number of people and make the statement that says, unfortunately, you no longer will be able to work for the Olathe Public School District, and we take that very seriously. So it's a very difficult task. I'll share just a couple more comments in terms of things that John shared with you, but again, in the frozen block grant, it was not taken into account, not only for increasing number of students, but for increasing costs. And so, as you know, we have increases, John went through that list, but it includes utilities and SRO contract and a number of things that are increased costs. So if your revenue is the same and you have increased costs, there's only one way to turn, and that would be to make some reductions. He also talked about the timing, and the timing is very difficult for Kansas right now. As you know, the session in Topeka was historic for the length that it went. So finishing in June, State Department literally has not been able to turn around the software until yesterday, and having John went to budget hearing today, so that's why we couldn't present that with you. So the timing of the cuts were also similar in terms of coming late, right on top of starting a school year. The question also would come up, I think, in terms of why not use reserves? Well, as you know, our reserves are thin in this district, again, from a number of years back, a purposeful spend-down of those at the time, and then everything hit in 2009, and we've not been able to rebuild those. But the little bit of reserve that we have is going to be critical to us if we get cuts or allotments during this coming school year. If the revenue doesn't come in and we get allotments which are allowed, meaning we don't get all the money that we even think we're going to get, contracts are in place, programs are running, the only place to turn would be as if we could use some of our reserves to get ourselves out of that. So we don't have the numbers to share. John will put those together with his staff, but one thing I want to start to talk about for taxpayers as well is that even though we are frozen, and if our levy remains the same or somewhat the same, just like the 20-mill levy is going to remain the same in Kansas, if the value of your house has gone up, you will see a larger tax bill. We are frozen, but you'll see something higher on that. So like the 20-mill statewide levy will generate additional revenue, but that's already being counted for in Topeka. It will say USD 233 on the tax statement, and we're part of that increase, but it's not anything that will come back to us. So we're going to have to keep talking to people about that. You raised my taxes. Well, we're frozen, but, and we try to work on the mill rate, but it's because the value of your house has gone up. That's a difficult thing. Let me see if I can turn to some more positive things. We are in the countdown mode for kids coming, and by my count, we have 18 more weekdays, workdays, until students arrive, and so that, again, is going to get here very quickly. John mentioned a little bit about the enrollment. The difference is, as he said, we used to really be interested in our FTE, and now we're not so much interested, at least for the next two years. That was always multiplied against the base state aid per pupil, that we knew we would get some additional dollars for every new kid that walked in. So now it's just head count, and again, as you saw on his list, 417 more kids is what the number we expect to come through. Of that, 233 will be in our high schools, so it's very positive that Olathe West is